You've seen this stuff, and see it's intensive for financially and education.
I've got enough postings in here. Actually, I imagine last year. Well, don't worry about it.
Excuse me?
I now call to order the House Committee on Elementary and Secondary Education. Want to welcome everyone here today. We're going to be hearing four bills. I will announce the order of the bills here in just a short time. But Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Representative Cookson?
Here.
Representative Barnes? Representative Anders? Representative Barr? Representative Burleson?
Here.
Representative Butler?
Here.
Representative Serpoy? Representative England?
Here.
Representative Futterberg? Representative Hare?
Here.
Representative Hicks? Representative Keating? Representative McNeil? Representative Monticillo?
Here.
Representative Moon?
Here.
Representative Morgan?
Here.
Representative Parkinson?
Here.
Representative Pearson?
Here.
Representative Rorada? Representative Rowland?
Here.
Representative Scharnhorst?
Here.
Representative Spencer?
Me, uh, here.
Representative Swann?
Here.
We have established a forum, so we can proceed. The order of the bills we're going to hear today are House Bill 1614, that's Representative Burleson, House Bill 1170, Representative Butler, House Bill 1536, that's Representative Spencer, and House Bill 1347, that is Representative Hargeville. So at this time, I'm going to turn the chair over to the ranking member of the minority party to conduct the meeting, that's Representative Pearson. Now feel free to applaud. Yes, yes, if we have video of our, any of our committee hearings, that is fine, but we need to know that ahead of time so that everyone is aware that it is being videoed. Do we have anyone that's going to be videoing today? And could you tell us who you represent? All right. Yeah, he has his own TV station.
If you want, this will be available on Ustream for anyone of you who are watching. We'll be tweeting about that.
Representative Burleson, you may begin your...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Eric Burleson, I represent the 133rd District, which encompasses Western Springfield, and the city of Battlefield. I have three school districts in my district, Springfield Public Schools, Willard, and Republic. And I've served on this education committee for a few years now. I like to say "served," but sometimes it's anguish on the education committee, as you understand. And I've never sponsored a bill, this is my first bill to present to the committee, and so I'm probably bringing it to you today. It began with a meeting with constituent of mine who's here today, who will be able to explain their story. And I learned a lot that day in that meeting about this issue, and to me, it was an aha moment. If any of you study Malcolm Gladwell and have seen or read his books, to me, it was a spaghetti sauce moment, that I realized that we are not addressing the issue, and it's really right in front of us. And so, the issue is dyslexia, and in the course of that conversation, it, to me, it paralleled the challenge that we had in previous years with autism. And I really applaud the work and the effort that was filed before me. I represent Scharnhorst in working this issue. And coming, and I, so I really feel that, and felt that, the framework of the language that he had created, created a perfect environment for this issue and to address a lot of the causes and concerns that I think are very similar. So, I'm not, I'm not an expert on dyslexia, but I want to provide a video that provides a quick understanding of what the scientific community has come to understand about what is dyslexia and what causes it. And so, I'm going to play that video for you.
Take a moment to read the following. How was that? Frustrating? Slow? What were those sentences about? They're actually a simulation of the experience of dyslexia, designed to make you decode each word. Those with dyslexia experience that laborious pace every time they read. When most people think of dyslexia, they think of seeing letters and words backwards, like seeing B as "deep" and vice versa. Or they might think people with dyslexia see "saw" as "was." The truth is, people with dyslexia see things the same way as everyone else. Dyslexia is caused by a pathological processing problem, meaning people affected by it have trouble not with seeing language, but with manipulating it. For example, if you heard the word "cat" and then someone asked you to remove the C, what word would you have left? "At." This can be difficult for those with dyslexia. Given a word in isolation like "fantastic," students with dyslexia need to break the word into parts to read it: fan-tastic. Time spent decoding makes it hard to keep up with peers and gain sufficient comprehension. Spelling words phonetically like "stik" for "stick" and "friends" for "friends" is also common. These difficulties are more widespread and varied than commonly imagined. Dyslexia affects up to one in five people. It occurs on a continuum. One person might have mild dyslexia while the next person has a profound case of it. Dyslexia also runs in families. It's common to see one family member who has trouble spelling, while another family member has severe difficulty decoding even one-syllable words like "catch." The continuum and distribution of dyslexia suggest a broader principle to bear in mind as we look at how the brains of those with dyslexia process language. Neurodiversity is the idea that because all our brains show differences in structure and function, we shouldn't be so quick to label every deviation from "the norm" as a pathological disorder, or dismiss people living with these variations as defective. People with neurobiological variations like dyslexia, including such creative and inventive individuals as Picasso, Muhammad Ali, Whoopi Goldberg, Steven Spielberg, and Cher, clearly have every capacity to be brilliant and successful in life. So here's the special way the brains of those with dyslexia work. The brain is divided into two hemispheres. The left hemisphere is generally in charge of language and ultimately reading, while the right typically handles spatial activities. FMRI studies have found that the brains of those with dyslexia rely more on the right hemisphere and frontal lobe than the brains of those without it. This means, when they read a word, it takes a longer trip through their brain and can get delayed in the frontal lobe. Because of this neurobiological glitch, they read with more difficulty. But those with dyslexia can physically change their brain and improve their reading. With an intensive multisensory intervention that breaks the language down and teaches the reader to decode based on syllable types and spelling rules, the brains of those with dyslexia begin using the left hemisphere more efficiently while reading, and their reading improves. The intervention works because it locates dyslexia appropriately as a functional variation in the brain, which naturally shows all sorts of variations from one person to another. Neurodiversity emphasizes this spectrum of brain function in all humans and suggests that to better understand perspectives of those around us, we should try to not only see the world through their eyes, but understand it through their brains.
So with that in mind, you would think that with one in five children dealing with this issue, that we would have some way of accommodating this. And in researching this, we found that we had tried to skin this cat for many years. We have, in the 90s, there was efforts made, there was different programs put in place. I learned that former speaker Steve Goff found, really, he really sought to try to find a solution to reading disabilities when he was speaker, and tried, and actually tried to put some things in the budget. But we don't, we don't see, when things get, when situations get tough, we don't end up funding those items anymore. So, but what's clear is that the school districts are not addressing the issue. In my community, there is one school district that has started to address the issue, and that school district, they have started teaching the proper pedagogy for, that's described in this video, for helping students make that transition. And I think it makes sense that we, if you, if we have a situation where we want people to be successful, and we, clearly, part of that success is students being able to read by the third grade, and one in five of those students has this concern, we also know that from the data, that in the high 70s, close to 80% of the students that have a difficulty reading have dyslexia. So if 80% of the population of people that are not reading have a form of dyslexia, to me, it seems that that would be the way that we should, would logically want to go about trying to solve that problem. I think that if you look at the bill that was filed last year, it addresses the concern of autism in a way that doesn't affect the budget. It encourages the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to go out and seek grants for autism, and to seek donations to address the issue from private sector individuals. And so in that regard, it doesn't, this is not, this bill does not have a fiscal note. It is not an item on the budget. We're simply asking, we're asking DESI to seek those donations, to seek those grants, and to make those available for students that qualify with this issue. And in the draft that I submitted, what I'm trying to do is to, for students to qualify, they would need to, because it is different from autism. A student that qualifies for autism, they have to be clinically diagnosed. With dyslexia, that is a, it's a, the medical diagnosis or the clinical diagnosis is extremely expensive. And partly because there's very few psychiatrists in the state of Missouri. I think if you count them on one hand. However, there is a, there is a test that gets, is a very good marker, very good indicator, it's called CTOP. And so, if a student can qualify by having that CTOP exam, and if they are flagged for dyslexia, then the hope is that the other exam would be hopefully paid for in part or in full by some of the grants that hopefully we can use to hold down. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions on the bill, and I appreciate the committee's time.
Are there any questions? Yes? Two anymore. Thank you for taking us on, and it's probably an oversight, it's my part. Should have probably been done earlier, although I think it just came to you as well. Looking down the road with this, let's say that we can get this passed through the legislature. Will this require that students attend at different institutions? Or will they remain in the institutions you're talking about, like our school districts? Or will it be some combination of the two?
I think it could be a combination of the two. The money could, is really, it's not deciding what they have to do with the money. As long as it's being used, or it's used in a way that directly affects the issue, in a way that uses the money wisely, and that, that part of that is really, whether it's still left from what you, from what you had, where you had. I'm trying to pull, trying to look for the gentleman's name, there's a, there's a method. Becky might be able to help me quickly.
I guess that's the direction I'm heading.
But there is a...
It's John Hattie.
The John Hattie method. So whatever, where, the money has to be, has to follow the John Hattie method.
Would that require that the instructor in that classroom take a course? Or just familiarize themselves? I mean, how intensive and how comprehensive and intricate is Mr. Hattie's approach?
Well, his approach has to do with making sure that the money is, that the resources are used correctly and that they are successful. That's, that approach. This, the people that receive the resources have to be, would have to be qualified to do so. And in that regard, because of John Hattie's approach, they have to be successful in what they teach.
Would that requirement be as extensive as what helps most autistics as ADA? You know, that is the regimen that seems to result in the most effect on the brain for an autistic. Is it, in a scale of one to 10, how intensive or how comprehensive would be the approach to helping a dyslexic?
It can range depending on the...
Degrees of severity?
Yeah, and so, there is, there are different pedagogies, and we'll hear about one that, that is a preferred one that I believe originates from Texas. And it, but there are other methods as well. I know that within, within our community, the NIXA School District is using that preferred method. The Springfield Public Schools is also beginning to realize this issue, and they are trying to pursue creating a program for dyslexia. They're not, they're not using the, they're not planning to use the preferred method. They're trying to put together some...
I suppose it's a 100%. I'm hoping that we could incorporate, going forward, a lot of this kind of training and this approach and this understanding into training our teachers. I'm not sure that that's happening, you know. There was a fear when Bryce's Law and the Autism Insurance Bill were both passed, that there would be a cottage industry all spring up, that people are going to take advantage of the grant programs and at that time, tax credit programs. I don't think we've seen that at all. If anything, we need more, you know, there's nobody racing to get there, that I can tell. And Bryce's Law is about, you know, beyond the fact that we talk about it here and that I represent a lot of that portion of our community. It's one of the best-kept secrets in the state of Missouri. I mean, it actually, along with this, will allow that every child that is affected in any way on the spectrum of either can receive the kind of help that they so justly deserve. I want to thank you again, Representative, for your work, and I will work shoulder to shoulder with you.
I appreciate that, and I respect the work that you've done with Bryce's Law. I want to make sure that this is, if anything, underlying or underscoring what you've already accomplished.
Thank you. Thank you, Representative Monticello.
Inquire, please. Representative Burleson, I agree with you, as a special educator, it was always frustrating to me that, because it's a medical diagnosis, it's not an educational diagnosis. I think there are differences. We just break it down into, you know, comprehension issues, reading issues. And I do think there are probably more specific ways for individuals with dyslexia. I don't see, am I missing it, that it's specifying that it has to be this John Hattie? I would be concerned that we're limiting to one method. Is that what you're saying, or?
No, the John Hattie method is a, you can Google it, but it's a method for making sure that there's success within, with any program. That's why it's generic enough that it would qualify for, that's why it's generic, because it qualifies for all of the syndromes included in the bill, the original Bryce's Law. And so, adding dyslexia kind of fits that. I think it provides that check that we would want, to make sure that the money's being used wisely for effective results.
Well, and I would need to Google it.
And so, and by giving it that generic, by giving it that, and not getting down into the detail of picking one particular way of addressing it, one particular education system or style or pedagogy, we're leaving room for what may, what may happen. There may be new advances and something...
You don't have it, I have not seen any of your language. Is it in there, in the list?
It is, it's still in the language, and it's actually already, it's already in Bryce's Law.
All right. I have a concern that we're specifying a particular method, because I would disagree that all of these, for all of these special education areas, that I don't agree that they would all benefit from the same method. So that would be mainly a concern to that. But I do applaud you for bringing attention to dyslexia, because it is separate, and it is frustrating for parents and the educators. It's frustrating for us at times that we can't get that specific information. But I would disagree that one method is overarching and would work with all disorders. Thank you.
Representative Cookson? Inquire? Representative Burleson, I want to, along with Representative Monticello, I want to applaud you for bringing this out into the open and the attention, especially making people aware that there are so many people affected by this, and they're differing degrees. But if we can't solve these issues at a young age, it makes it almost impossible to move forward as children, young people move through school. I mean, everything from reading bills to going forward with, you know, technology, all of those different things. But it's good to hear that there is some diagnosis, medical diagnosis of this, that we can address it that way so that we got the experts, you know, and then, I guess, and this would bring together the best practices in trying to address that. Is that what this bill will do?
Yeah, what's, what was done for years, and I, and one of our, one of our former colleagues, grew up when I was talking to him, Senator Crowell, he explained it, you know, he has, and he's supportive of this issue, I wouldn't say, I don't want to qualify to say he supports the bill. I spoke with him about it, but, he, when he was explaining it to me, he said, you know, I just, I grew up and just knew that it was very, it was just difficult. And I spent a lot more time outside of the classroom with my grandmother and with his mother, learn, you know, trying to break through, as it was explained in the video. That, building that neural connection from the right brain to the left brain takes a lot of time and a lot more patience. And so, what happens is that the students, the parents sometimes get frustrated, and they just, they just stop. And so, but if they are able to make that bridge and that connection, what I think is remarkable is you see some of the people that have dyslexia and were able to make that bridge, that neural connection, they become some of the most brilliant, prolific minds of our time. And I think that, I personally think that it's because... And I think that, I, I personally think that it's because they are, when they're reading things, they're, they're touching that very creative, um, visual aspect of the brain, that, that see things in a way that, 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 sort of, that somebody who doesn't have dyslexia doesn't see it when they're reading.
Thank you. Anyone else from, from the committee? Mark, would you call your first witness, please?
Thank you. And we have two witnesses that have, that have driven here, so.
Want to make sure all our witnesses fill out a witness form, please?
Well, my name's Kelly Understall, and I came as a parent of a child with dyslexia to talk about this bill. And I'm also a co-founder of Decoding Dyslexia Missouri, uh, which is a grassroots organization of parents and educators that have come together to try to improve the situation in the state in public schools, um, so that kids have access to the resources that they need. We tried to hand out, I think everyone has a blue folder, and in the blue folder, um, on the left-hand side, there's two pages. Representative Burleson did an outstanding job going over a lot of the basic facts about dyslexia. On the first page, um, there's a few...